America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, we have a pledge of allegiance, moment of silence, public service announcements, 6:35. We have a public hearing on an application filed by Highland Orchards for an alteration of premises for the premises located at 195 Arnold Road, Sturbridge, Mass. 01518. We have Mary O'Coin from the United Way, town administrators update, department reports from police and fire, action items which include consideration and possible action on the appointment of Benjamin Grasso, consideration and possible action on the withdrawal of the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher Trevor Breeze, consideration and possible action on an application for a special one-day alcoholic beverage license from Deep Roots Facility, consideration and possible action for a change of manager from Old Sturbridge Incorporated, DBA, Old Sturbridge Village, on their liquor license, consideration and possible action on a Hawker and Peddler license. Michelle, is that stolen? Okay. So pull item E. Item F, consideration and possible application for a common victular with Bring Your Own Bottle, BYOB, from Silna, Churchill Village, located at 450 Main Street. Consideration and possible action on the selection of a board of selectmen representative and alternative for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher Crystal Comtoys. Consideration and possible action on the grinder pump repair charges for John Marr. Consideration and possible action on the selection of a board of selectmen member to attend the virtual Central Mass planning meeting on Thursday, September 14. Consideration and possible action on the promotion of Dave Flavontaine from senior heavy equipment operator to crew leader. Consideration and possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license for Uno Chicago Grill. Consideration and possible action on the board of selectmen to authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie and bond engineering services for the Sturbridge wastewater treatment facility, clarify repairs in the amount of $39,700. Old business, application for a dock permit, 243 Big Alum. New business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and adjourn. We have a few minutes before the public hearing. So, Mary, would you like to come up?
Sure. Sit here. Good evening.
Thank you.
Hello. I had to write out my notes, I'm sorry. Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight what the United Way is working on in our community to make it a better place to live and work, especially here in Sturbridge. And as Mr. Goodwin has announced, my name is Mary O'Coin, and I am the executive director for the United Way of South Central Mass. I also was a Sturbridge resident for 20 years. For over 85 years, the United Way of South Central Mass, and you may know it under its original name of United Way of Southbridge, Sturbridge, and Charlton, we have raised funds through residential and small business mailings aligned with local companies who run workplace campaigns, foundational giving, and special grants. So now you know how the United Way raises funds, and here's why. To provide support to vital human services programs within our community, everything that has to do with health, education, and financial stability, our three pillars. My passion has always been early education. By providing affordable childcare, preschool, and education to our early learners, we can raise the potential of these children and attain third-grade reading proficiency, which has been proven to increase the education success and prepares these children for a bright future. Since the pandemic, the United Ways in Massachusetts have worked with the Commonwealth to obtain funding to support education loss. The United Ways of Mass Bay was selected by the Department of Early Education and Care, EEC, to manage a $10 million grant across the state for what is known as summer step-up. This grant is meant to help bridge the learning loss that occurred to our youngest learners. Due to the pandemic, many school systems were fully remote or hybrid. The use of the online tools or wearing masks proved to be difficult for pre-K to second grade students. They suffered from a learning deficit during those years. EEC provided the funds to encourage summer learning for these students with an opportunity to retain or gain some skills for the next school year. The first round of funding happened in summer of 2021, with a very short window to apply. Only the Southbridge school system, along with the Southbridge YMCA Child Development Program, completed their application in time. It was a small grant of less than $10,000, and rarely just scratched the surface of what could be done. In the summer of 2022, the grant was again made available to any district that had received funding in 2021. I knew that Sturbridge had wanted to apply in 2021, but the short application time proved to be difficult. I appealed to the state to include Burgess Elementary in the pool of qualified applicants. The state agreed to allow them in, and this was great news. Bethany Reynolds-Wellthing worked diligently to receive enough funding to include not only the K through 2 students, but received funding for grade three as well. As the state grant is very generous with amount per head and staffing, she was able to cover the cost for all grades at Burgess to allow over 200 students to attend the summer step-up program in 2022. This included lunch and transportation for all students, which was free for all students. Burgess received over $200,000 that summer. This summer, 2023, the state granted a smaller amount for summer step-up. However, Burgess was eligible to apply and receive approximately $96,000. This amount, again, was enough to cover the summer program at Burgess for all grades, with close to 300 students in attendance. Summer Step-Up, managed by the United Way, has provided the town of Sturbridge almost $300,000 for summer learning. The classes the students attend have been everything from literacy basics, summer reading assignments, robotics, coding, math, cooking with science, art, and even beginner sprunch. I visited the program both years, and I never thought I'd see children happy to be in school during the summer, but all were engaged in each session I attended. Beyond summer step-up, the United Ways of Central Mass, which there are three, have worked together to obtain a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Early and Secondary Education, DSE. We received a grant for $4.5 million in 2021 to support our after-school and out-of-school time, which is ASOST. Over the course of two years, the United Way of South Central Mass has awarded over $550,000 to local nonprofits, after-school programs, and school districts. This year, Burgess will receive $22,600 for an after-school STEM program, and Old Sturbridge Academy will receive $30,000 for robotics and math team after-school program for their middle school students. These additional grants, along with our annual campaign funding, we have been able to provide the towns of Sturbridge, Southbridge, Charlton, Dudley, and Webster with over $1 million of support for education, health, and financial stability programs. You've seen over the years the United Way logo of the hand of a person above it, the circle of hope. We believe that giving a hand up to a person will go much further than just handouts. This year, our theme is bridging the gap. The funds raised through the annual campaign will be used to improve the lives of people who live here, building a bridge to the challenges facing families and individuals in the region such as poverty, hungry, quality education, and healthcare. The United Way is providing a hand up to create a more resilient community where everyone can thrive. Living united, we bridge the gap to a better life for families, friends, and neighbors for generations to come. We hope we can have your support during our annual campaign for the 23-year. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to thank her. I was part of the summer program, and I did a reading program, and I just want to just reiterate what Mary said. The students loved it, and it ranged from dance and yoga. I mean, I had something a little less exotic, because it was a book club, reading books. But the students did math, where they did kitchen math, and they made homemade pizza and everything, and they had to do the measurements. But Mary was there, and I just think it's a wonderful program, and, you know, thanks to the United Way. And then the students would be walked from the summer program with one of the counselors down to the recreation, so they coordinated with that, so that if you were just there for the morning program, and you wanted to be part of the rec, there was a way without parents having to come and pick them up. They just walked down the little side road by Cedar Street, and it's a wonderful program, and, you know, thank you. We don't often hear, you know, the positives, so I encouraged her to reach out to our chair, Chair Goodwin, and our town administrator, and I'm so glad that you came in.
Yeah, I'm very happy to be here. It is probably the best part of my job is actually dispensing of the money, right? It's, you have to raise it, or you have to get the grants, but it's very rewarding, especially to do it in the communities in which I've lived, to know so many of the people who are helping to create a good environment for our students. It's really important today to catch up from all the years of the COVID pandemic restrictions that occurred. And these young learners have to catch up, and this is what Summer Step-Up has been all about, and the after-school and out-of-school time grants that are occurring, to really focus in on the academics and enjoying learning. And it's really important to, it's part of the United Ways, one of the pillars is education, as I mentioned, and third-grade proficiency is key. And so I'm trying to do my best in our communities to promote that.
Not to put you in the spot, but do you think there'll be money next year, too?
They're hoping. One of the things we'll ask is that the towns and the school districts send us letters saying how supportive the grants were for their program, and especially with the head count. There's all this reporting that was done, so that some of those demographics are in there, but it's really, they're trying to make it, we're doing, through United Way, we're kind of pushing toward our state legislatures to make it a line item. So there's a couple of different ones. One is the ASAR grants for DSE and the EEC Summer Step-Up, and we hope to be able to do it. But at least for two years, the students here in Sturbridge have had free summer school, basically, and having the addition of transportation and lunch included was a game changer per Bethany. She said, especially with transportation, a lot of kids weren't able to make it to a summer school program in the past because they didn't have the transportation, and because they had buses this summer and last summer, they were able to do that.
Well, that's wonderful. We appreciate all your work, and just let us know what we can do to continue to support.
Well, please run workplace campaigns here and there, and when you get a letter or you see something in the newspaper or whatever, please join us for our campaign updates and pub quiz and all these fun things that we actually do. But it all supports, it comes back, right back to the community, truly. What's raised here stays here, as they say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is just probably around 6:43, so I'm going to call the public hearing, and I think, Mary, do you have the announcement?
Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Highland Orchard for an alteration of premises for the premises located at 195 Arnold Road, Sturbridge, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. In accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 5, 2023, 6:35 PM. Hearing is at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 301 Main Street, Sturbridge.
Okay, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Well, no, when you read the public notice, that opens it.
That's a motion here. Mary, how do you vote? Mary Lou? Do you want to vote one by one in public?
Not to open it. You open it just by reading the public notice.
I thought it was an individual hotel.
Doesn't matter. All right, so we are.
To close and.
Oh, that's all right. I'm flipping it. All right, Highland Orchard.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to hear us. I'm Don Damon, general manager, one of the founders of Highland Orchard and Berry, going back a number of years. The application that you have in front of you is nothing new or different than we have done in the past. Before, we had a tenant, it was in the lower level of the building. The tenant vacated during the pandemic, and we are looking to remake the whole operation, a wholly family-owned, operated operation again going forward. Currently, our licensing for the on-premise alcohol includes the pavilion and the grounds and the second story of the building. We are just asking to go back and include the entire building, the lower part of the building as well. You know, after careful consideration, we have new family members and younger family members who want to be involved in the business, and we feel this is a great opportunity to take the business into the next generation.
Are there questions from the board? Comment?
No, it's pretty clear, and it's, you know, what it was before.
All right, well, do we have any comments from the public? All right. Doesn't look like we do. All right, so now.
Motion to.
Now, do we have one? The closing of all the.
I make a motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All those, yeah, all those in favor? All right. Now, do we have a motion on the application itself?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for Highland Orchards, Inc. for an alteration of premise for the premise located at 195 Arnold Road, Sturbridge, Mass. 01518.
Second?
Okay, and all those in favor? Great, yes, have it.
It's a beautiful location. I wish you luck.
Yeah.
Reopening.
Okay, so now we are on to item four, which is the town administrator update.
Yep, so a couple of things. I've got memos for most of them in here. The first, after our last meeting, so this is the first chance, I think, I've had to update the board on this, I was notified by the state that they were in the process of moving some migrants into hotel rooms in Sturbridge in the Days Inn, particularly initially. I emailed Representative Stroll, Senator Fatman, our police chief, our fire chief, our health department, our superintendent, and our building official to ensure that they were notified of this, given that we needed our resources to be prepared for this. The state could not give me accurate numbers of how many people, just simply how many rooms. Health department took upon itself, Ken took it upon himself to do some research as best as he could through the Department of Health, to ensure that there had been some health vetting of people who had come in. There had been some, the people had originally been in another community for several weeks, had been evaluated by a nurse before they came here, but the state still was not clear on exactly how many people were here. Then subsequent to that, I found out, I think it was last week, that Super 8 is also now being used. I was told 14 rooms today, but I actually found out, but a message on Friday actually had said 18 rooms. There is not a lot of consistent information coming from the state. I've had some members of the public ask me why I have not put out more information ahead of this. First, this is my first chance to brief the board on this, and you are, my job is to brief you on this, but also, I'm not comfortable putting information out when I don't have exact information. So as best as we know today, 14 to 18 rooms at Super 8, one account is 14, one account is 18. There are some at the Days Inn. The superintendent is handling all issues children-related. I cannot get into how many school-age children or where they are located for, because certainly the children fall under the protection of education and the rules and requirements that she has. Ms. Boyd certainly will be briefing her board accordingly. Police, fire, building inspector, we are meeting tomorrow internally. The police and fire chief are tracking any calls right now that are coming from the hotels related to those migrant workers, and I did have a meeting with Representative Stroll, as well as Superintendent Boyd, really to address the cost and what we need. A, we need information from the governor's office, accurate information, and B, I spoke with the rep about the fact that we lose rooms taxed because the state is tax-exempt, and there is a revenue question for us and a cost question that certainly needs to be addressed. That's why we're tracking the costs, is they happen directly related to that. The governor has declared a state of emergency, so she is seeking funding, and frankly, if she is going to seek funding, then my belief is that we should be seeking reimbursement for the cost directly to our taxpayers for this. Again, we're ensuring public safety as best as we can, as we would in any situation. Ms. Boyd is handling the educational aspect of it, and I am working on the financial end of the cost to the taxpayers. So that's about all I can give at this point. I don't have much more information than that.
Maybe for the, because I did get a few, you know, emails and stuff, maybe you could just educate the public on what the law is regarding sheltered families, because I think there's, you know, some misinformation and some just lack of knowledge as to what a municipality's role is. I know you said the governor declared a state of emergency, but what does that entail in terms of the duty of a town?
So what that means is that, first of all, they're engaging in a private transaction with hotels that we do not by law have any right to interfere with. A hotel owner can rent his or her rooms to whomever he or she chooses to rent them to. We cannot interfere in that process. The state of emergency also dictates that the governor can overstep the 30-day limit that we have on hotel stays. We are hearing that the families at the Days Inn will not be there more than the 30-day limit, but we are hearing that the ones at the Super 8 will be extended into November. Those children are, some of those are from other school districts, there's a whole host of things going on educationally with this, but we do not have the right to interfere in a private transaction. I will tell you that the state of emergency, as I said, allows her to overstep any of our local bylaws and regulations. It also means that, and we have not seen this, I want to be clear, we have not seen this, but it would give her the latitude, if an owner, an owner can't refuse to allow the governor to rent rooms. They are renting at a fair rate, if not an equal rate to what the going rate is. It's almost like an eminent domain situation, where if they're paying a market rate, they cannot be denied the state under the state of emergency. So we do not have, to be clear to the public, this is not a case of the town saying, okay, this is fine, we're accepting this, or we're asking for this, or we're fighting it, or anything else. It doesn't matter what the position, frankly, it doesn't matter what the position of the town is, the Commonwealth has a tremendous amount of authority. I just feel that from my position, my role on the day-to-day is to just simply ensure public safety, gather as much information as I can, and work with our team to keep on top of whatever it is we can keep on top of, and let the superintendent do what she needs to do from an educational standpoint.
Any other questions or comments from the board on it?
Thank you, because that answers a lot of questions that residents had of me, had of the town.
If you would like, I would try to keep it off of social media, because so much misinformation flies, but if you would like me to, at least on my page, put a synopsis, if you think it would be helpful for people to see. I mean, I know we'll start a discussion, but.
Personally, I think it would, because people don't recognize, you know, what the law is or what steps we're taking in terms of, you know, protecting the town's interests as well.
And it is financial and safety that we're working on protecting.
Right.
I have a question, do I have a question for the end?
Yes. Okay, what's your, are we on to your next item?
Yep. Big Alum dock permits. So we had had someone come in with a concern about a dock. We started doing some research. We found out that none of the temporary docks had been permitted, which is required as an annual thing. We did, I went over personally, Chairman Whitblanchard went over, excuse me, former chairman, I'm sorry. He's talking about that chairman.
I'm not so per se.
Chairman Goodwin.
Everybody keeps calling me Chairman Goodwin tonight, too.
It's the white button down.
Yeah, you got that professional look there with that white button down.
I'll call you Jamie.
So, so like Whitblanchard came out with me as well, and I will say this, that I spoke with Mr. Peterson, whose dock we were looking at. He has agreed that the portion, it's a few feet over onto the neighbor's property, he would flip that portion in the short term. Because nobody had permitted the docks, we didn't, I certainly wouldn't recommend, and as I put in my memo, that he have to pull his dock up when nobody else's was permitted either, and that next year, they all will get notices. We're going to look to try to coordinate all the lakefront homes and send out a mailing to all of them, that if you put a temporary dock in, you need to apply for an annual permit. We may want to revisit the whole procedure on this, that people have to annually put in for a dock, a temporary dock permit, but we will, I think, sort of address this next year at this point, and just simply as long as Mr. Peterson moves the portion that was in front of the neighbor's property, it's about maybe three feet over the side. If he moves that for now, until he pulls it out, that will sort of let this go at this point. It is a cove situation, nothing is, so like Whitblanchard had a concern, I think, that how it was sticking out, was it sticking out in the path of a jet ski or anything else? And when we looked at it, it's clearly in a cove situation, and they're all equal. They're all longer than the 20 feet, and so at this point, for equity purposes, we're just going to say, next year, everybody gets a permit, and we revisit the process, and in the meantime, Mr. Peterson will move that other side. So that's where we're at, unless the board feels differently.
No, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. The other memo is just informative to the board that on the Commons, there's a memorial going in for Mary White. I just wanted you all to be aware, because it's the Commons property. We have an applicant for the school board committee vacancy. I don't know if the board wants to set a joint meeting time at the next meeting, if you want to invite the school committee to the next meeting to consider that vacancy.
It's fine with me. Does the board feel differently?
No, it's just.
Okay, so do we want to add that to the next agenda, a joint meeting? If the school will confirm, the school committee can do that.
Yeah, check with, check with them.
Yeah, we'll check with them.
That one will be to find out, let her know.
Yep, and we'll let her know if they can come to the next meeting. If not, then we'll have to, yeah.
And the applicant.
And the applicant, yes, that's important. And on a final note, and on a very sad note, and this is out publicly through social media or whatnot, so I can share this, our veterans agent, Mike Stroup, his son has been diagnosed with an extraordinarily serious condition. He had surgery over the weekend. He will be undergoing major treatments. He's a 10-year-old, little boy named Giuseppe, he goes by Zeppe. If anybody in the public wants to send cards, they are doing Cards for Zeppe, S-E-P-P-E, S-E-P-P-E, Cards for Zeppe. Care of the Southbridge Fire Department, 24 Elm Street in Southbridge, 01550. Again, 24 Elm Street in Southbridge, 01550, and you can address it to Cards for Zeppe. It's a drive. We are also, for town employees or town selectmen, anybody who's on a board or commission, Michelle's office and the clerk's office are collecting cards or anything, and we will deliver them as well as a group from us. Mike, I do need authority or approval from you to allow me to send a letter to the state allowing an alternate VSO to serve us. I told Mike not to worry about it, and we would just handle it. So as long as you are all comfortable, I will send a letter. He has lined up somebody else, and I'm comfortable with that, and we'll just work with the state, and I believe it's from Lester, the other person, off the top, Leominster or Lester, one of the L-towns. And, but we will, we'll move forward on that. I was just really frankly more concerned about just sending prayers to Mike and his family, so.
That's awful. I'm so sorry, that's just about as awful as it gets.
Devastating news.
Do you need a motion from us on the veteran agent?
I don't think so. I just want you to be aware that I'm going to sign on someone else to do that, just as long as you are aware of that and comfortable. I just don't want Mike even thinking about it.
No, thank you for that, Robin, and thanks for taking care of it.
Thank you, and that, that's it for me.
So I think we're on to department reports, chief.
Good evening. I only have one month's report for you, and that's going to be for July. During the month of July, we answered 2,837 calls. We had 63 arrests combined with summonses. We stopped 302 motor vehicles, 61 motorists assist, responded to 81 alarms, 634 business checks, four restraining orders, six domestic violence calls, three BNEs, and we requested mutual aid from other agencies 14 times during the month of July, and we've responded out of town zero times. Some operational highlights. mutual aid from other agencies 14 times during the month of July, and we've responded out of town zero times. Some operational highlights. Sergeant Payne taught a green light driving class. Officer Crevier, Titula, and Judy Adano attended a bike rodeo over at Burgess Elementary School. Sent some officers to walk through a farmer's market. And Mary, for your information, there were five motor vehicle accidents between Walmart and Extramar.
I saw that, thank you.
Three, three were, three people were transported as a result. I don't know the extent of their injuries, but three people were transported, so five crashes, three transports. We did seven child's safety seat installs. We did 36 inspections for the boat patrol. Training, sent an officer to three buys and a bus training, roadside drug investigation training, SWAT training, and assessment center testing, preparation of class. At the schools, Burgess Elementary School, we had one trespassing call that was kids for bikes, biking in an area that they shouldn't have been in. We had a missing run, missing child, they were found within three minutes, they were located before we even got there. We assisted a group twice. That was another one for call for bikes, kids, and another, bikes in the road, and then another one for a young child having behavioral issues. We deployed our Comfort Canine to assist with that call, no further issues there. Medical call, then another call on Burgess School Road for kids playing chicken with the school bus on their bicycles. Not, not a smart thing to do.
Jamie, you're not supposed to do that.
Then we had, for high school, we had a citizen that was a flat tire, and then we had a young kid from East Brookfield in the middle of the night. His, he called the police, his phone ran out of batteries, it was about to die, and his light, he snuck out of his house, and his phone light didn't work, so he wanted some assistance, so we went up, and he said he quite frequently sneaks out of his house, so we returned him to his parents' house.
Well, school is certainly back in session.
That was July for us. Any questions?
I have one in front of the board.
I have one. Just the missing person that was found within three minutes, was that in the summer, like at the playground with their parents or kind of thing?
No, my understanding was at the school, inside the school, and I think before they, I think he just walked out maybe into the hallway or something. Another thing we did just recently was operationalized, which is, will be on next month's report, but I thought it was good. We did a first-time school event, Back to School, Stuff a Cruiser event down at the old Cinemagic, and it was very successful. We filled probably almost two cruisers with backpacks, pencils, crayons, and all kinds of different stuff that are going to be distributed to the school, and then they could, they'll know better where those toys, I mean, those supplies get distributed. But the officers, the school resource officers did a great job with that, so.
That's great.
That's good.
All right, anything else?
Who was the brainchild of that?
Who thought of it? Well, I was the one that saw it on Facebook, and I just stole it from somebody else's department, but I implemented it.
That was the brainchild.
I didn't reinvent the wheel there. It was just a little, little Facebook search, and I said, hey, that looks like a great idea, let's try that here.
Good job.
That's great, Chief. Thank you, I don't think we have anything else. All right. All right, we are on to the fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back to summer again. So you have in front of you the months of May, June, July, and August. I don't know how I got skipped, but I guess I did.
Too much fun.
The, really, the only thing noteworthy is we remain busy. I think unfortunately, because of the kind of summer we had, it seems like it rained every other day this summer, it helped us in one sense to keep everything from drying out. Unfortunately, I think we're all going to end up paying for it now in the fall and the winter with allergies and the colder weather. If you read the Farmer's Almanac and you believe it, it looks like we're in for a doozy this year, so. Good and bad, unfortunately. Couple of things of note, I was notified today that firefighter Steve Joyce has been selected as one of five finalists for the Fire and Life Safety Educator of the Year Award by the Commonwealth. Mary Lou, your protege, did a wonderful job, so.
That's great.
We will find out the final choice, the committee's final choice, on the 21st of September at a dinner in Southbridge, so I will keep you posted on that, but we're all rooting for Steve, so. That's really everything that I have. There was, there is one letter that I shared with you from a firefighter from another community that I wanted to just highlight. Two of our firefighters, Doug Cutler and Luke Quatricelli, were on their way to a training class in another community and came upon a motor vehicle accident, and stopped to help, as I would expect them to do. This other firefighter who was there helping as well thought enough about this that she sent this email in, and it is in your packet, I think it's under the month of May, but I just wanted to make note that firefighter Luke Quatricelli and firefighter Doug Cutler went above and beyond to assist with this motor vehicle accident. And this firefighter from Sterling wrote a letter to praise them for it, so I just wanted to make sure that they were.
It was a nice letter. It was a nice letter.
It was. She had some vitriol for the other firefighter, kept on going.
I know, I know. I was, I was surprised at that.
How do you admit to that?
I don't know.
I like how you went to.
I don't know, but I'm grateful I'm telling you about the two that stopped and not the one that didn't.
I mean, you see someone doing compressions and you just keep driving when you're a firefighter, EMT, really?
Well, it wasn't ours, so.
Takes every time.
That's great. So anybody have any questions for the chief?
I want to know, how come we have August of 2022?
You should have August of '22 and '23. It's not in there?
No, it just says 8/1/22 to 8/31/2022.
This time was my fault. Not Missy's, but this time I just copied them right and pulled them in off the email.
I have it here, I'll give it to Michelle. I have it here, I'll give it to Michelle.
Okay, no, I was just curious as to why we had 2022, that's all.
I, I give you the comparison, so I give you, I give you the month for this year and the month for last year, and then the year-to-date up to this point.
Yeah, we definitely have 23. Yeah, we definitely have 23 there. I think it's just the comparator that you're getting.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, before you go, jumping ahead, have you filed a disclosure?
Have I filed a disclosure?
With the town clerk?
I have not.
Oh, you need to.
Okay, I will.
All right, well, with that, sir, I think that's all we need. All right, we're going on to the action items. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
We are going to action item A, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Benjamin Grasso as a full-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department effective September 6, 2023, with an hourly rate of $2,290.
All right, tonight I bring to you Ben Grasso. Ben competed in a recent interview process. Mr. Grasso has a Bachelor's of Arts in Science in Music from the University of New Haven. Mr. Grasso currently works as a team leader at Tractor Supply in Sturbridge. In addition to being a team leader at Tractor Supply, Mr. Grasso has been a recipient of several prestigious awards, to include becoming an Eagle Scout and a member of the National Honor Society, both in high school and at college. We've completed all the requirements, a thorough background check, and I am recommended he be appointed full-time dispatcher effective September 6, with an hourly rate of $2,290.
Okay, questions, comment from the board? All right, well, I think as noted, you have certain relationships in the department, and Chief, you have to file a disclosure, but otherwise, yeah.
For clarification, dispatch does report to the police directly, so there is no chain of command.
Communication.
Oh, no, but it still.
Absolutely. But I just, for the public.
It's a very broadly framed law. It's appearance of public interest, even if it is not a true conflict of interest.
But just so the public does know, the report chain and hiring authority for this comes through, the hiring authority to me through the chief.
Well, with that, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Benjamin Grasso as a full-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department effective September 6, 2023, with the hourly rate of $2,290.
Second.
All those in favor? Want to move forward?
Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you very much.
I see no family resemblance.
Well, I'm kidding. Genetics are unbelievable.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Chief, I think you're still, so we have a consideration and possible action to withdraw the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher Trevor Breeze, previously voted and accepted on April 21, 2023 by this board, so.
Yeah.
Want back?
It's back.
I'll let, I should sit down for this. So there's recently been four resignations for various reasons. One moving out of state, one thought the job was very complex, one accepted another job position, two's accepted another job position. This one that accepted another job position decided to hold off essentially for another couple of months because there's another police job. He wants to be a police officer, and he's going to potentially get hired by the environmental police. So I said, hey, right now with all these resignations, I could really use you to come back, so if we could just, because it really puts us in a critical situation with staffing, so.
It's really a delay of the resignation.
Yeah, it's going to come down in a couple of months.
So we're just rescinding it for now and.
It'll probably be done in November.
Readdress it, yeah. But I just think it officially had to be in front of you because you had voted to approve the resignation, so you'd have to kind of vote to approve to.
Right, and we got another interview tomorrow with a potentially another fully certified dispatcher. If that goes well, I'll be here two more weeks trying to get another dispatcher.
We're keeping it moving.
It's a very complex job.
What better place to be than here?
Than here on a Monday night.
It's on a, it's on a Tuesday night drive.
I have Monday or Tuesday nights, this is where you want to be.
So, okay. So was, did his termination effectuate?
Well, his letter of resignation was effective, I don't even know.
Last meeting.
Yeah, last, last meeting.
So, you, well.
Okay, we can put in words to reinstate.
Yeah, the reinstate, but do we need the pay rate is what I was going to ask.
Well, I guess the question is, do you simply revoke the resignation? Can you just simply revoke the resignation?
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to cancel, because then he still comes back with his seniority, his same pay rate.
Right, because if you accept the resignation, then we have to technically bring it back at a lower step, and it becomes complicated.
Okay, so we are making a motion to withdraw the vote, I guess would be the way to frame it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to withdraw the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher Trevor Breeze, previously voted and accepted on August 21, 2023 by the board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
I think that was it for me.
Sometimes we have to have a motion to reconsider.
You too. That's okay. You know, by the majority, and then we do it, but.
Our friends from Deep Roots. Come on up.
Yeah.
That's technically what we should have done, so.
You know, you missed us.
Yeah. You're looking for a one-day liquor license?
Yeah, to do Harvest Fest again, basically the same thing we did last year. We would have a mobile bar set up with mini cocktails. We did coffee and hot cocoa last year, so we had non-alcoholic options as well. Same thing, same exact.
Any questions from the board?
No, it's fully me and I.
All three of us tip certified, yep. You should, you should have our certifications in there as well.
Great, any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the one-day special, I'm sorry, special one-day alcohol beverage license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for the Harvest Festival 2023, sponsored by Central Massachusetts South Chamber of Commerce, on October 14, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and October 15, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Stay.
And one extension. Guys have it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we hope business is going well.
It is, yes, thank you.
Wonderful. All right, we are on to consideration of possible action on application for change of manager for Old Sturbridge Village Inc., DBA, Old Sturbridge Village, on their liquor license from Lisa Ann Harrington to Michael Edward Heenan. Is anybody from the office here?
No, I did tell them they should have someone here.
I mean, my comfort is to have the person here.
They need this tonight, or can they?
Yeah.
This is a long-standing situation.
Well, I do, but this is not complicated. It's not like, you know, change of premise or.
I mean, I think in the future, though, we've always required them to come. Yeah, I did, I did let them know they should have someone here. Yeah, we thought they were going to. Can it wait two weeks, or are they already? Did you give a sense of urgency on it, or have they already changed?
This person has been gone for a while, and I have been back and forth with them, so they are technically operating a license, but the manager is not there anymore.
So they need a manager.
Yeah, it kind of cuts two ways, because if they've been gone a while, they should have somebody here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, what are we talking about?
Yeah, I will, I'll reach out to Jim Donahue just to let him know that, so he's aware, because he, it probably is not up at his level to even know that someone has been requested to be here. So I will, I will reach out to Jim tomorrow and just remind him that, you know, the board really needs someone here in the future.
Yeah, well, what's the board's preference? Do they want to proceed?
Well, they do, I personally do. I mean, they do need a manager.
And nothing else has changed, right?
No, I don't know, working on changing that.
No, I'm not worried.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's not the.
No, I know.
They're specifically told that they should have somebody here, and then they don't do anything for, it's been going on for, I get it if something happens suddenly, that's totally different, but.
Yeah.
What's the rest of the board thinking?
I would prefer to have somebody here.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's not like we're changing a liquor license, but you are changing managers. I still think that someone from Old Sturbridge Village should be here.
Yeah, because truthfully, if something happens, we're.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern, and you just, you know, I know it's mostly a stamp, it's by and large, it's a stamp, but the one time it isn't, it can be pretty.
Well, Michelle will have to.
We will emphasize strongly.
Indicate those words that, you know, you have to show up. If you don't show up, it won't be considered.
If they don't get a change soon, I told them, because the renewals are coming up, and the AVCC won't renew their liquor license with a manager of change, too, so they worked, I made it very clear that they have someone here tonight for this, so.
Yeah, because I also have a question on, do we ever get a change of manager for the Kahula member? We went back and.
Yeah, we did. We did, yeah, we did, earlier in the summer.
Yeah, he's doing it, not the other Steven.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I missed three months. Yeah, the family member is now, he did come in, he did come in, and everything finally got, everything finally got cleared up.
Okay, good. Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the change of manager for Old Sturbridge Inc., doing business as Old Sturbridge Village, on their liquor license from Lisa Ann Hoddigan to Michael Edward Heenan.
Do we have a second?
Okay, so if we don't second it, we would just get taped.
Wait, I'm sorry, are we preferring them to be here, or are you making a motion?
She made a motion to approve it, and I think Mary's thought is that she would, say.
You need somebody there.
Don't do this again, basically. So, you know.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor? All right, I'm against it, just for more of a political point, to have them there. Probably wouldn't have done it in a two-tube.
Well, it was a hard call, I mean...
It's, yeah, I mean...
I, I agree really with Jamie, but as a practical matter, we're not going to meet for another two weeks. But it cuts both ways. I mean, if they haven't had one, they should have been here.
Yeah, well, the point isn't, listen, we're not trying to hold, jam them up or interrupt their business, but the, the sale of liquor out of one of the largest facilities in town is not, is fraught with certain risks. And they need to take it seriously and this does not indicate taking that particularly seriously, especially when Michelle told them.
As someone who deals with this, I would, would like to have a job.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Jim on this personally. Yep, I will reach out.
I don't like that either because...
I'll take care of that.
But anyways, I'm sorry.
Thinking about reconsidering my vote, I was very torn.
I, you know...
Okay, well, I'll stay behind it, but with my...
I will make that very clear.
Okay, um, we are, are we pull the, this, next item? We are on to F. All right, consideration and possible action on an application for a common victor with Bring Your Own Bottle, BYOB, for Sanola Ush Churchill's Village located at 450 Main Street, Fishtail. Come on down. I know. I know, and a lot, you know, firefighters get hired and they become a dispatcher.
It's a mess, yes.
So, so what's going on?
So, we've been at Churchill's for over 20 years as married.
Oh, my goodness. I almost didn't recognize you when you were sitting there.
I know, I've gained some...
We're regulars, but Matthew was like two years old and he's 26.
We go on Wednesdays.
So anyways, now my son is 19 almost.
Oh, my goodness.
And he wants to open a couple of nights for dinner. So that's what's going on. So we're, both me and my husband are going to be there too and we're looking for like a BYOB license for, if people like to come in and sit down. Like, our menu is not like expensive, you know, because we have...
Delicious food.
Yeah, but we have, so he made his own menu now for dinners, so we have a lot of selections. I don't know if you want to take a look. I brought it over, but that's what's going on.
Okay, so questions, comments from the board?
No, I mentioned to Michelle that down below where we ask about BYOB, that first thing, do you allow Bring Your Own Bottle? Should, well, it's confusing because she doesn't allow it now.
Well, yeah, that's, I was gonna ask actually.
It should really probably be changed.
We'll fix all the applications. Yeah, Michelle's doing all these applications.
Oh, yeah, she's straightening them out, so...
That's, that's actually fine. So I also, when I got your email, it said that I, one of us has to be tip-certified?
That was my mistake. I spoke with Mary about that.
Okay, so no? Because I was like, okay, we're not serving them. They are basically serving themselves. We will provide them the glasses, you know, but then, right?
You and your husband are gonna be there as well.
Yeah, yeah, like at least one of us, like, we're not gonna...
But there's no tips requirement.
Yeah, for that. Okay, so if I need to do that, I will, but I just didn't know, okay.
Once you get an actual alcohol license.
I read the, the selectmen's policy.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
I'm not saying shit.
No, but I, no, like, maybe not yet, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, so any other questions, thoughts? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for a common victor license with Bring Your Own Bottle versus Neela Ush slash Churchill's Village located at 450 Main Street, Fishtail.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Duh, who's, who's? We have a second. Do we, all those in favor?
Lost my idea, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming. Okay, so we are on to...
You know what, Jamie, we skipped E.
Yeah, that's, that's withdrawing.
Oh, John, I'm sorry.
The, so we are on to the Central Mass Regional Planning Rep for 2024.
Yep, so we just need a board member to officially be the rep and an alternate.
Yeah, officially the rep, this is right at the moment.
Right, Mary is the alternate.
I think so, yeah.
You might, so if you want to continue with, with Jamie as the rep and Mary as the alternate?
Oh, yes, please.
Well, because my office is right there too, so it does make it a little easier to walk over now.
We love that.
All right, so I will continue as the, our rep. Mary, do you want to be the alternate still or somebody else?
I'll do it since you're such a great rep. It hardly involves anything but from your mind.
That's an easy one, it's like vice president.
For me, it's not that complicated either, it's a zoom on in the background.
So we need to appoint you. I, I...
Yeah, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jamie Goodwin as a delegate and Mary Darling as our alternate delegate to CMR PC.
I'll second that.
And all those in favor? Everybody vote? Okay, I missed it. Everybody was aye. We'll tell Michelle.
Yep, I've got the...
You got it, okay. And then, I think this moots out J as well, doesn't it?
No, that's a different one.
Oh, is it? Oh, no.
J, J is who's going to attend the meeting, but it might be you. It could moot it out because you'll attend it if you want to just simply...
Yeah, just connecting to, going to item J. The consideration of possible action on the selection of a board selectman member to attend the virtual Central Mass Planning Meeting on Thursday, September 14 at 5:30 p.m. I make a motion that I be appointed that representative.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Great, all right. Back up to H, consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher Crystal Comtoys effective September 13, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter of resignation from full-time dispatcher Crystal Comtoys.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Let me thank her for her service. Consideration and possible action on the grinder pump repair charges for John Marr at 17-year-old Hamilton Road Sturbridge.
So Mr. Marr requested, he was billed for an overtime cost on the pump repair. This is one of the E1 pump situations. The reason he was billed overtime was because he had to clean out around the pump and so Violia staff was not available until after working hours when he, by the time he cleaned out the pump, is what Shane is telling us, and I believe I copied you all on the email from Shane. Based on that, our internal group of abatement people, which is Heather, myself and Barbara, Barbara's felt that it should go to the selectmen, Heather and I actually both voted, believed that it should be denied. And so we're moving it forward to you with a recommendation that it should not be, that he should have to pay the overtime cost because of the fact that the accessibility to the pump was, is the responsibility of the homeowner.
All right, discussion?
I do agree on that. Violia, though, if they go out after hours on another pump and they could access it, there would not be any overtime.
No, no, if it was an emergency call out, that's one thing. The overtime was a direct, according to what Shane had said, the overtime was a direct result of having to wait for him to clean out access to the pump.
Right, which should be cleaned out at all times.
If you have an emergency, you want them to be able to get in there, yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm probably, I'm on the fence on this one because what exactly, I mean, would a homeowner know that access was not available? Like, what exactly did he have to do?
I just knew he had to clean up around it for them to get to it. Yeah.
I just... Like, what, did he have to like remove structures that were sitting on top of it? Because I mean, I think we're nickel and diming our resident in this case. I've got to be honest and I would grant him, especially if we didn't put him on notice that it's got to be totally cleared out. I mean, were there a few cans, water bottles? Like, what exactly prevented them from access? Because it, it seems again like we're nickel and diming and because we have this push to not, because we have this concern that maybe homeowners should start being accountable to their, to, for the grinder pumps, I think that may have influenced our decision. In the past, when we have found things in the grinder pump that don't belong, we have charged them, but I guess I just don't know the nature of what exactly...
Yeah, this isn't within the...
No, I know, but like, really, why couldn't they access it? Like, what?
I will tell you, we have not, we have yet to have any charge before where this is confirmed.
I know, that's why I'm...
Said this, so...
Well, it's also...
What the nature of the cleanup?
It's also a year before they charged.
How, how many hours did they have cleaning out?
It was three hours, three hours of overtime.
So it couldn't have been a couple of bottles and cans. If they had worked three hours to clean this out, this was an issue.
It was three hours of work to repair the pump.
Yeah.
But they, he could, he was notified that he had to clear it out and...
It didn't take them, he cleared it.
I don't know how many hours it took him to...
Yeah, I think the question I have, and, and I'm, I don't really just, I feel everybody here makes sense to me and I think this is probably what you're getting at, Chase. It's like, what, what was, what did he have to do?
Yeah.
Why did they hold it off? Was it like...
Yeah.
I, I just, yeah, I mean, I, my instinct is that Violia, if it was a couple of cans, would have just gone in and done it. I, I wanted to think he couldn't get to...
Did they give him a timeframe? Did they give him a timeframe saying, okay, you need to have it cleaned up by Tuesday at nine in the morning so we can get in there?
Well, it's an emergency, I mean, it's emergencies, so you can't wait days.
I think it's a bylaw, we have to have them cleaned out for access like this. I know when I installed them, it was very clear that it had to be free and clear and a right of way of access.
Would it take three hours to clear it?
No, it took three hours to clear.
That's what I was asking.
I don't know how long it took to clear. All I know is that he couldn't get it cleared in time for them to get there.
And I agree with Mary, I mean, why did they wait a year to build them?
That's the, I think that's on the building cycle.
Oh, but I, I, I don't...
A year? It might be, depends on when that happened. I mean, we get a water...
I mean, look, I can, I can, I can have Shane later. We don't even know if he remembers what he had to clear out.
Yeah, let's hold because I don't know if this...
I can't answer these questions.
Find out how long it took.
Because it's, it's...
What he actually had to clear.
Yeah, I mean, it really is, I'm sure Shane is, it was fair in that they weren't being difficult, but it just, it's better just, for the sake of diligence.
And Heather agreed that it should be denied, so I'll defer to, we'll just have them come back.
No, I tend to agree, but it's a good point of, it's just something we should know before we vote, you know?
Okay.
So hold, all right, so we're moving...
We can get an email from him letting us know what he, what did he have to clean and how long did it take him?
I'll call him.
I would like to know, like, if it took him 10 minutes or whatever?
I believe he's not on, well, email me, but he can write me a letter or something.
Because memories wane and I think it's very unreasonable for us to charge a year later. Extremely unreasonable.
All right, consider, on action item K, consideration and possible action to confirm the promotion of David Lamontaine from Senior Heavy Equipment Operator to Crew Leader for the Department of Public Works at the rate of $34.45.
This was a position that was vacated when we had an employee take a position over Violia. Dave Lamontaine has applied to move up. Dave has certainly shown himself to be more than competent in leadership positions.
Great, any questions, thoughts?
I highly recommend this.
Great, anybody have any thoughts, concerns? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the promotion of David Lamontaine from Senior Heavy Equipment Operator to Crew Leader for the Department of Public Works at the hourly rate of $34.45 an hour.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? And the ayes have it. All right, moving to action item M, consideration and possible application for a one-day liquor license for Uno Chicago Grill, Dorothy Wegel, am I saying that correct?
Wegel.
Wegel. I knew I was not going to get that one right. General Manager from September 9, 2023 from 2:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. for a Bruze and Car Cruise, tapped takeover from Seven Saw's Brewery Company. Want to come on up?
I think Michelle has an update on this.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, or Mary. Okay.
I, according to Mass General Law, if a premise has one license, they cannot apply for another license.
Yep. So how do I go about this? So I know last, like during COVID, we were allowed to use that outside and I know it was under the COVID rules and that was rescinded.
Which we're not under those anymore, so...
So is my liquor license within the four walls or it's only within the four walls?
Yeah, that's true. I did confirm that.
Yeah, it's...
So I think you'd have to get an expanded liquor license then.
So we have to do, either do an alteration of premises with the ABCC, which...
Yep.
Will take time Saturday. But I'm wondering, could they, we would discuss maybe, could it go into the brewing company, but I don't know where they have to be here.
But they have a liquor license as well, but...
Not through town.
Not through our town?
Or it is, it's a different, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be difficult, but if it's...
I know.
I'm not sure there's what much we can do.
It's not, it's not a decision.
I'm like, this is the first time I've ever had to do this and we're like, hey, there's this event and it was very fast-moving, so...
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to have the time to be able to do the alteration, even a temporary alteration of premises.
Okay.
I feel badly, I wish we could do something.
No, I mean...
Yeah, there's no way.
I don't think there's much we can...
No, it's the way the law is.
And I hate saying that to you. I hate saying we can't do it.
No, I know, I completely understand and I looked at my bartender who wanted to do this outside and she's like, this is a great idea. I'm like, as long as we can get it done. And I'm like, I think I need the alteration of premise.
We did confirm none of the COVID rules, it's still, yeah, okay.
They're gone.
We're sorry, but at least it's data for the next time. If we could do it, we would.
At least I know this isn't as scary as it sounded.
It's not usually scary.
No.
Thank you.
No action.
Yeah, no action, it's just tabled. All right, M, consideration and possible action for the Board of Selectmen to authorize the Chair to execute the contract, tie-in bond engineering services for the Sturbridge wastewater treatment facility, clarifier repairs in the amount of $39,700.
This has to do with the painting of the clarifier that's been down. This was approved through town meeting, the funding is in place.
Okay, any thoughts, comments, concerns?
Nope, no.
All right, do we have a motion?
It's only money.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair to execute the contract with tie-in bond engineering services for the Sturbridge wastewater treatment facility, clarifier repairs in the amount of $39,700.
Second?
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, well, let's just do, let's go to citizens forums so you don't have to hang around too long. Sorry to keep you.
That's okay.
So what were your...
Keith Devlin, 89 Breckneck Road, just about a question about the immigrants. Robin, you said that they were immigrants, then you classified them as migrant workers.
No, no, I, did I say migrant or, I apologize. No, no, I, did I say migrant work? I apologize. I think I said migrants is the word I've been using. Um, I, I, the word we've been hearing is migrants, families, immigrants.
Asylees is probably.
My other question was, do we know their status? Are they legal, illegal asylum seekers?
I do not officially know status of anybody. I am.
The numbers they're talking about, you wouldn't even be able to get. So part of them might just straight here be on a, some sort of sanctuary status. The other part would be that they have been docketed as asylees in different parts of the country and have moved here and are in the process of the federal government processing their paperwork. So it could be any of this.
We don't even have official status of, some may be here, have may have been here for months in the state. Others may have just come into the state weeks ago. The only thing I do know is that there was a group that had been in another community for a couple of weeks that had been vetted by health, and then that some of the other people have been actually in the state, I believe, a few months. But I, I honestly don't know. But please don't hesitate to ask me questions. I don't want fear and misinformation. I'm always happy to have you ask questions.
And do we know, are they family units? Are they individuals?
We are, we are told that these are families being placed here. I do not know numbers of children. They have not given us total numbers of children. I, it has not been indicated to me that any of these are individuals in rooms.
And let's make it easy, Robin. We don't really know.
Well, exactly. So my next question is.
Somebody in the state has some idea of what's happening exactly, but in terms of the larger communication outside of whatever that particular agency is, there has, and part of it in their defense is because this is all pretty, this is all a pretty live event. But we're, we're not getting, really have not got adequate communication at this juncture, so we don't, anything we're saying at this point.
Yeah, you're guessing, you're.
Is, it could be, oh, anyway.
Yeah, it could be all the things.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Who do we contact? Like, as a citizen, who at the state can we bug? Because I know you're going to do the best you can. But at the same time, you know, there should be public record. Guys should be able to get.
So Representative Smol, Senator Fatman are working on this with us, and you certainly can reach out to them. But they are actively engaged with us, as well as the governor's office, frankly.
And Richie Neal's office, Senator Warren and Markey Oliver.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, yeah, your federal delegation absolutely.
Because they have a lot of say in this as well, because this is a federal problem that they're passing on us effectively, right? Because Congress and both parties has done what they've done for thirty years.
And I have indicated, I mean, you are a business owner. I have indicated as well that I have a concern for the town on revenue loss if too many hotel rooms are taken up by people who are not tourists. As tourists frequent the businesses. So I have indicated that there should be some reimbursement more at a pilot level, payment in lieu of taxes. So not only are we losing the rooms tax, but there's the intangible that business owners may be feeling, and we have made that clear.
For what we know right now, this is not going to be, the sky is not falling, everything's obtained, and the songs.
Right now, we're at, I think, a total of like twenty-seven rooms total as of today. So that's.
No, and I understand the states don't.
Yes, but please, if you do have questions, I'd rather have people ask me directly, and I say this so anybody who's listening knows. If please ask me directly as opposed to, like, airing it out on social media gets a lot of misinformation. So I'd rather have people coming to me directly for the information. I will give, I will publicly give you anything I can and I have.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Because there was one thing on.
Yeah, social media is going to, yeah.
What were you going to say, Mary?
I didn't stop the ball rolling yet, but it's going to.
So I will put together something, as we indicated, outlining what we can and can't do.
Yeah, and just keep it short and down the, down the middle.
Yep.
All right, so the, um, okay, so that's the end of the action items in Citizen Forum. Old business. You already mentioned that item. Mary Lou, do you have any old business?
No, I do not.
Chase?
I have no, thank you.
I'm Mary.
Yeah, I just have one. I know in an earlier meeting, we briefly talked about the fact that we're considering renting space on our water tower for more cell reception. And that tie-in, tie-in bond now, that KP Law indicated that, you know, it's really free for you in charge of day-to-day operations. And, you know, to your credit, you brought it to the board, and we all said, but thinking about it more, I guess, I do feel that it is a public policy discussion that the board should have. I did get at least one email, one email, and I don't know if other people did too, from residents on Old Farm. And, you know, actually, when there is, there are health implications and property value. And normally, we have always signed the lease on anything. And we typically authorize our Chair to sign it on our behalf. There was a time where we all signed everything, which was kind of ridiculous. But now, in the last few years, we've always authorized our Chair with leases. But I don't think, you know, first of all, I would like to see, and again, this is, Robin, you were the messenger in a way. But I'd like to see KP put it in writing as to why they don't feel it's public policy decision for the board.
I actually have that for you. I can get that.
Okay, and, because I, I'm going to kind of step back and say, I do think it is.
I do want to follow up, though, on all of this, that before I could even enter into any type of licensing on something like that, it, and we've already put Gene Bubon in touch with Dish, who's considering this, that this has to go through a whole planning approval process, site plan.
Right, but that's planning board.
But it will have a whole public process before it could even be considered. We do have a lease agreement with T-Mobile. The big thing with the lease, the difference in putting it out to lease versus licensing is literally going out for a bidding process, which just complicates it, because then several groups could bid. And now we have a problem of how many are we going to put on there, or who are we going to give it to?
But I, I get it, but I, I don't think simply going through planning.
So we can do it as a lease process.
Is adequate. I'd like to have our own public hearings where, that's just my preference.
If we do it as a lease, it just means I have to put it out to bid, and then the lease would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
I guess, I don't really care whether it's a license or a lease. I just feel like where residents start being concerned with public health, you know, with their own health considerations. And I know, like in Pittsfield, where they put up a, another cell tower, there's a big concern with headaches of people who lived in that area. And so I'm going to kind of be the voice for, for that, for that concern.
There's a difference between a cell tower and what we're talking here.
No, I know. This is a cell antenna. Yeah.
On top of it already, a tower already, right.
But for that reason, Mary, I think, and I tend to agree with this, it's probably just a booster and probably not no different than what you're getting hit with probably anyways. It does, one, communicate that to the public, give them an opportunity.
Oh, I don't disagree. I think.
I, I mean, if the board wants to have a policy that any transmission equipment, like to use a broad term, because it's not a cell tower. But any transmission equipment requires approval of the board after it goes through the planning and all of that. You certainly can make a policy. I don't feel, I don't think there's any reason why you collectively can't say a policy that any transmission equipment must come in front of the board for approval.
Yeah, but if we're doing something under the, from a structural perspective, if you, if, this isn't really about this conversation at all. This would be more of a worst-case scenario and a policy, is if we're, how are you doing? You want to do it the same way each time for everybody. And if it, if the, if you, if it is really leasing, even though it is also sort of licensing, if we're going to go in that direction, we should probably do it more formally, because then, one, we're giving open access to vendors. We're not finding ourselves in suits down the road. It's just a little bit more process here. Probably saves headaches long-term.
The T-Mobile one is going back out for lease, because it has to technically. Now, in that case, it's sort of going to be a sole source effectively, because whoever would take it would have to remove T-Mobile's equipment. But I also now am dealing with, you know, the church has reached out to me on that one because of the access way. So we're dealing with that one as well. But I will tell you, there's nothing that even can happen remotely until all the public hearings happen with planning, which is going to be.
Yeah, but I think it should begin here.
That's what I'm trying to say. It's not, to me, sufficient.
I, I just, did everybody get this email from the Old Farm president?
The question I have to take, to sort of take to KP is that if it is not a policy in place currently to have it start with the board, can I, now that somebody has put this request in, change that and make it start with the board when we haven't in the past?
Well, here's the thing.
Well, we don't know, I don't know if I necessarily agree with the, with, you know, that's taking the opinion as being correct, that it's not a public policy issue. I don't think we have to, if something's a public policy issue, we don't have to have a policy in place that says it's a public policy under the charter. We, we are the ones.
And also, you can act with, under the, you're, if you're making the decision maker, or if it's within your authority, even if that were the case, which I'm not sure that it would be, but it's still, you can do it pursuant to the board.
Well, that's how I, and that's why I brought it to you anyway.
I know, I did, and I didn't really. No, I know. And I just didn't have enough time to reflect on it. And then when I did do some research, there's, there's a lot involved.
Yeah, this one is, I mean, this one is a little different than the cell tower, or an actual tower. They're going to put, like, they're going to hide the antenna and.
Yeah, but it's not really the physical appearance. It's more, are there health issues surrounding it?
This is a satellite booster, so I don't know the difference, you know?
Yeah, that's.
I just don't know the medical.
And that's the point. It's just wherever we should cut it off, it's all just about due diligence at some point, making sure. Somebody raised reasonable concerns near their home.
I'll forward you the opinions, though, just so you have them. But I guess the question is, even with the opinions, is, is Jamie pointed out, even if it's in my purview, I'm not going to do it without going, coming to you first anyway. But the reality is that the process, as it stands, does have to sort of start with planning, because I can't even recommend to you what they're going to do until they present a plan to planning. I haven't seen the plan yet. So there's nothing for me to kind of bring to you, because I don't know what it is yet.
Yeah, but even just the concept.
But I am bringing the concept.
No, I, because Mary.
I have nothing more, though, to bring to you.
Well, but if.
But that's it. That's what we needed. And then.
So do you want me to have them hold on going to planning until the plans come to you first, but the plans may change dramatically?
No, no, no. It's just that, you know, we should have had this for a general discussion before.
Well, that, I, that's why I did try to bring it up. I don't know what to do now, because we're kind of in a.
That's what we're supposed to do, not, not.
We had enough time to reflect on it or do our own research. It was kind of just. But I guess the KP Law says we can do it, and we're like, okay. And then I'm like, first of all, you know, no written opinion from them, and no time for us to really digest the information.
Robin, is your concern that you've indicated to them that the board was amenable to it, thereby you're amenable to it, and that you're worried that they're?
No, no, I, in fact, today even alone, they wanted to see the, if, how the lease agree, how a licensing agreement would look. And I sent them a template, and I said, however, this still has to go through all the planning and everything else. I haven't even mentioned the select board's position in it yet, because frankly, there isn't anything to indicate that you would. Even the releasing of the T-Mobile, you'd find the sign the final lease. That would really be your only input. But that would only be in the lease portion at the end.
Which is a pretty significant impact.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to say. This is how, I don't want to say this is how it's always been done, because that's like the kiss of death words. But that's the reality. So the question is, what do we do now, when this has been the process we've already done? And now we have two people, two entities engaged in the process right now. One is a renewal. And I, and I can't even say that's a no-brainer, because I've got the church reaching out to me on it. And the other is sort of a new one, but it's not really a, a tower per se. But the reality is, I can't, I can't present anything to you for you to consider until they present a plan. And they're designing a plan right now to give to planning, which we could have them come to you first with it. But I'm not sure it's worth them coming to you first if planning is going to change it.
Well, I think it's.
No, 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 I, go ahead, Jamie.
No, you can go ahead.
No, it was just the idea that we should have had more time to think about it, as Mary said, and to do our own investigation. We should have had discussion about it before.
But there's nothing done. I mean, the point is, I have people approach me all the time to do things.
Just the idea of it, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, well, and the reality is, is this is going to become a bigger, this type of thing, we should wrap our arms around, because we're going to get more and more of this. Extenders, extenders, all the stuff where they're going to want to put in street lamps, all that stuff. So we got to be.
And there is a revenue stream on it, too. So, I mean, obviously, we're concerned about health issues, but, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year from each of them is something to consider.
Yeah, and for that last service.
Pay, pay the doctor bill.
But the, all right, well, I think that, so I guess where we're at is, well, there's not really anything to report out from a technical perspective, because the plans, they're, they're doing whatever they're going to report to you.
All it does is engage in the process.
And you're going to send, and they're going to send, you're going to send us KP's decision.
Yeah, send you KP's decision. And I guess I look at this as anybody else who comes forward with a plan, or a project or a development, it goes through a process, and it eventually.
The question has to be, do, as a matter of policy, do we want to rent space on our water towers for cell reception in Tenai and that kind of thing? That's a, that's a policy question.
It is a policy question, but the problem is, you already are.
Sure. But we're doing that once, and then it's.
Well, but, yeah, but it's also, I mean, depends on the neighborhood, you know, how close it is to residential.
Yeah, but you, but you have to do that within a, you're, you're right. I totally agree with you, Mary. But I think the point is, right now, the, we have to.
Horse is out of the stall.
I don't think the horse is out of the stall, because they haven't done anything, and there's not, it's not.
Planning, well, planning hasn't, and.
Nobody has.
Well, no, but even to tell residents, don't worry, you'll have an opportunity during public hearings before the planning board. I would like, again, to have public hearings before the Board of Selectmen and us decide, it's a matter of policy. Do we want to move forward with those kind of projects?
I think that it's a general meeting, that it has to be a general meeting, not just on that water tower.
I get, no, oh, absolutely, because that's the really bigger issue.
Why don't we do this, the next, the next, the next meeting, why don't we have a broader conversation, invite residents to, I don't know if it has to be an actual public hearing, but we'll notify the concerned residents in the area that we want to hear from them about it, and we'll talk about this policy more broadly.
I think it has to be open to all, though, because the question is going to come into play, that if it's a policy, then the one that we're renewing for T-Mobile also has to be included in that.
Frankly, it should apply to all, because we're trying to figure out what's doing, and it should be fair to both of them.
Right, if T-Mobile doesn't have it, somebody's going to lose cell service. So that's, again, for the public to consider. And that's going to be the public's voice.
That's the balance on all of it, and it is, and we're not going to just do something from the hip. But by the same token, we should have an informed structure approach, and I think that's what Mary and Mary is really saying. So let's just talk, maybe, so can we get organized about that for the next meeting?
Yep, since the two of them are coming up right now. I mean, the T-Mobile one and the other one.
I mean, how long is, um, T-Mobile? How long is their lease?
They've been there like fifteen, twenty years, I think, and they're right now operating on the clause in the lease that said, once the lease ended, they would continue with an escalator until a new lease was put into place.
Yeah.
So that's been going on for a while.
Well, and if we're going to do it, we should see what the economics are of it, too. So, yeah, that's another policy consideration.
But what it doesn't mean is, just because one gets a lease, that another one gets a lease. You know, it.
Understood, but the individual one.
And how many do we want to lease out, and in what neighborhoods are they? You know, there's a lot of implication. We can't just say, well, we're doing it for one, so we have to do it for everybody.
That's why it's a policy point. You're right, Mary, but I think we all, I think we're all on board with that. Um, okay, we have any correspondence? Oh, no, we didn't do new business, did we? New business? Oh, we didn't do old business.
Speaking of old, um, evaluation.
Okay. So, good.
Well, you said when we had a full board here, you discussed how to go ahead.
Yeah, so I think, and I don't know if everybody was here at the meetings for it, but the, we had talked, I think, in June about your evaluation, or it was May, and, and mostly that was around the compensation point and figuring out what, um, how we would take up the performance evaluation process from there.
Because I think I requested that if you were going to speak or listen to certain department heads, I wanted all. I requested that all are spoken to.
Yeah. Well, that, yeah, and that's a, that's a little, I think that's a little bit of, that's more of a larger policy. Yeah, Chase, what's up?
But it's not a requirement to speak to department heads.
No, no, it's not, but apparently, what I'm gathering is there has been conversation, and there was a discussion that there is conversation with some department heads regarding my performance. And I am respecting that if that is, I'm requesting that if that is going to be taken into consideration, that if you are going to hear from one, whether they solicit you or otherwise, that I am going to ask that you hear from all or none, but not one or two. And I'm requesting that because I have seen it in situations where it is, and I've been, it has been to my benefit to have them all spoken to, but it has been to my detriment when only one or two are listened to.
I think you're getting a little ahead of us, honestly, because I think, I think we're more, what's the process going to be more broadly?
Right, because, I mean, we do have that seven, eleven, excuse me, on the checklist. And that is only one aspect, you know, interaction with the employees. And the other one was, um, somebody mentioned the goals. That's only one aspect. So that's two out of eleven things. But that's always been a, I've always thought it's been a good.
No, it's always healthy.
Good tool.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's, this is not, at least I'll speak. But the, so the, I wasn't on last time when, when it happened with Jeff, so what was the policy, the process like then?
It's been the policy the same way. We use the checklist.
And just go through.
You know, go through.
Because this is.
Something, you know, and to Robin's point, yes, maybe you won't talk to every department head or every employee, but if you're talking to one, you should get two sides from them. You know, like, how do you think Jamie's doing? What's Jamie's strong points? But then ask, then ask the other side, too. Well, you know, what do you think he could maybe work on?
Sure.
So it's.
Well.
It's all how you ask it.
And I guess the question I have is just process-wise, because the way my contract was written, this current year they were, we're in, I had just a minimum two percent, because you would come up on my starting. But where this evaluation becomes important is that going forward, any escalator beyond the COLA is based on that evaluation. So, you know, the timing on it would be for, for next July, the consideration of the evaluation in conjunction with any type of compensation. So the timing is probably good to start talking about it now, because we're coming into September. But we did establish those goals in what, like, January, February, I think, we started establishing goals. So I can put together an update on those goals for you at some point, probably as we come over about six or eight months into that.
Okay. Mary, what were you going to say?
I just had a couple of points. Very reasonable what you requested to talk to. So from my perspective, what I always do is I, I send an email to all the department heads, or a phone call, or a text, depending on. But usually, it's an email saying, you know, I'm going to be doing the evaluation. Some of the questions, as Mary said, they don't all deal with staff, but some of them are how effective, you know, a leader, what's their morale? And you don't know what a person's morale is, for example, unless you talk to them. The vast majority will talk, both those who, you know, love the TA and those who are concerned. But when you said, you know, it's either all or nothing, we can't force any.
No.
I just, I make the invitation. Some people are not comfortable.
Yes, that you request all.
I request, yeah, so I mean, I request.
You request to hear from all.
Sometimes they're not.
Oh, no, I absolutely, it's.
Some of them don't want their name, you know, it's, it's.
I totally understand that. I just want to be sure that everybody's requested.
And the other thing is, yes, you know, Robin needs to be evaluated, but I do have a little bit, like, some of her goals, we, we set in January, and they're long goals, and, you know, we're only in August.
Yeah, but they've always, part of the evaluation is self-evaluation from the TA.
Right.
And in that, the goals, you know, in the quarter through, started working in progress, you know.
Yeah, I can give you an update, a six-month updated, yes.
So I'm just saying, like, my expectation at this point is not going to be, for example, to go through and say, oh, she hasn't done this yet, she hasn't done this. It's, it's, some of them are a work in progress, because we're six months, we're only six months in. And really, the way it is, is we've set goals for the year, and then we're supposed to evaluate them the year later, so we can look at the whole year. I'm just saying, for the new people on board. So when we set, you know, our, our goals, some of them were short-term, some of them aren't short-term. And, but it is useful for you to say where, you know, where you stand on all of them, for sure.
Jason, do you want to say something?
No.
Okay. So the. So, the, the, yeah, so, the, it makes sense to engage on it now specifically because you probably, Robyn, have a better sense of the town than you had.
Yeah.
So, how would you like to proceed with this, Mary? What do you think?
Well, I think we've lost this time. I mean, we've always had the evaluation done in April. I mean, the goal setting has always been done November.
Sure.
It was a little late. But I think we've missed this year.
Sure.
To tell you the truth. But I think, you know, Robyn, knowing that she should have an update on her goals and given us time, you know, we should be, we should be having a summary in April.
Right? Are you one, yeah?
Oh, that's fine, yeah. I mean, I can give you a, I think we're at seven months from when the goals were set. I can certainly give you an update, you know, within the next few weeks on that.
I mean, that's personally, but I, I think-
That's easy enough for me to do.
Oh, I don't disagree. I thought you wanted her-
I thought you were wobbling sooner.
Me, too. I thought you wanted to evaluate her now. No. And I honestly thought the goals are set in, in January, right at our, at our-
November.
We were late having the brunch this year.
For whatever reason, we could get it done in October, November last year.
Well, I thought we usually did the brunch in first of the year.
No, November.
It got pushed off last year to January.